All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the town of Yucca Valley. Tuesday, June 15th at 6:01, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Denison.
Here.
Droz.
Here.
Lombardo.
Here.
Schooler.
Here.
And Mayor Abel.
Yeah, here. We just, uh, we were just in closed session, so legal counsel, do we have anything reportable out of closed session?
Thank you. The town council met in closed session with respect to the two items on the closed session agenda, and there is no reportable action, and that concludes the report.
Excellent, thank you. I'm going to ask our town manager to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight, and also, we have an elder, and I believe a missionary from the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. Do we have that person in the room or online? All right, so we'll go ahead and stand for our pledge.
(inaudible) Ready? Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No invocation?
No invocation.
No. Okay. All right, one more call if we do have our invocation. Is he here or she here tonight, online? Okay. All right, well, thank you, everyone, for attending. We're going to start off with some great presentations and introductions. We're starting off with one, which is the Spirit of Yucca Valley Award. I have invited Linda Shaw Morrison and her husband Dana to join us this evening, so that I may recognize Linda as the latest recipient of the Spirit of Yucca Valley Award. This recognition was established by our present town council in 2019 to recognize those individuals who have given their time and talent so unselfishly in serving others. We don't regularly see or have ever seen a Spirit of Yucca Valley recipient's name in the headlines of our local paper, or heard about them in the latest radio news updates. It is due to the fact that they serve behind the headlines with the servant's heart. Linda fits this category perfectly. I only found out about her volunteer work for the local pregnancy clinic accidentally by seeing some of her beautiful quilt work she has painstakingly works on and donates to those in need. I have example of one of the quilted bags that she sews, as well as some of these burping towels and so forth, they're so colorful and beautiful, for these new mothers, these pregnant mothers, those with newborns, that don't have a whole lot of support, and through the pregnancy clinic, she donates of her time and talents. I found out about this accidentally, like I said, diaper bags, burping cloths, and other items made with love and given away. Linda's physical limitations are no match for her overwhelming desire to do what she can do for others. If anyone had an excuse to say, "No, I can just no longer physically capable of helping," she would be one, but that's not her. She doesn't dwell on what she can't do, but pushes, and she pushes forward in what she can do. She unknowingly motivated me to take a look at myself and ask, "What can I do to make a difference?" Thus, she sparked my desire to raise funds for nonprofits with my distance running. Thank you, Linda, for allowing me to share just a very small example of your spirit of giving to others. I've talked to other people, and she has given of herself through the years volunteering at local churches and other things, the list would go on and on, but that's how Linda is. You really don't know unless you really try and have to ask. You have lasting impression on those at the Pregnancy Center, those newborn, excuse me, those new mothers, or those who have received services that maybe don't have a whole lot of their own resources or support. From this old runner and the entire town council and the town staff, congratulations, Linda.[328.81][328.81](applause) Now, I've asked the executive director of the Pregnancy Center, Brandy, to come up and share just a little bit about Linda, and I'm going to come forward here in a moment to present this plaque to you and a certificate from the town council and our staff, so. Brandy, come on up, please.
There you go. You can speak right into this mic.
We are so appreciative of Mrs. Morrison, and just tapping off what Merle has said. It's been over a decade since she has been giving her all, and I think we appreciate it so much just behind the scenes in what she has done. And it was a community event over a decade ago that she heard about us, and she came out and she's like, "What can I do?" So, as tirelessly she has quilted these beautiful bags for us, and then a few years ago, she's like, "Well, I want to do more." And then she created, then she started creating her burp rags, creating the bags, and we figured, and talking to the old director this afternoon, she said, "We'd count hundreds of them that she has done." And what's special is about these, we take these little bags, and then people donate things for newborn babies. So what we do is we have the opportunity, it's like a baby shower in a bag for those girls after they've had the money, after they've had their baby, excuse me. We ask them to come back in, and we, diapers, wipes, clothes, toys, little rattles, and everything that we put in there for them, so that helps them even after they have had their baby, we can continue to meet with them and get them, you know, still coming in with our services and encourage them. We don't stop after they've had their baby, we want to continue our services with them, and we're just very appreciative of what Linda and Dana have done through the years. And not only that, we always know when the bags come in empty, they don't come empty to us, you'd be surprised, we have to go in there, because she texts little, she texts little things in there, like she'll stick an envelope in there, a little letter, or she'll stick pens for us, because she knows in the office, we're always using pens, or, you know, the toilet paper thing, you know, we find rolls of toilet paper in there, she's always blessing us with the gifts in her, so we're very appreciative of what she's done for us, and we love her dearly.
Thank you so much.[501.03][501.03](applause) All right. Okay. It's blinking red and green, so batteries are low, but anyway, all speak nice and loud. The Spirit of Yucca Valley Award. You want to go ahead and turn all the way around here so they can see? All right. Spirit of Yucca Valley Award. This is presented to Linda Shaw Morrison for her positive contributions to the town of Yucca Valley over the last several years. Your dedication and commitment is appreciated by the citizens of Yucca Valley and the entire Yucca Valley Town Council, presented on the 15th day of June 2021. You married a great woman right there. Congratulations, Linda.[553.79][553.79](applause) And hopefully, now that the restaurants are opening and so forth, you can celebrate and have a little dinner out on us, so. Thank you again, thank you, Dana, thank you, Linda. Appreciate it, thank you.
Bag? Oh, yeah. Would you make sure they get that bag right there? I was just going to have you stand up and take a picture with me.
Thank you, and that's exactly why we came up with this award in 2019, is recognizing those hardworking people behind the scenes that you may never hear or read about. Now, we have another very fun tradition here, and that is recognizing our Ms. Yucca Valley and her court, so please come forward. Congratulations to all of you.[616.72][616.72](applause)
Good evening, everybody. This is Annalise. Okay. So, first of all, I just want to say thank you so much for this opportunity. I am so grateful for this town and all of the wonderful doors that it has opened for all of us, and just what a safe environment and loving and overall positive and, I don't know, just wonderful environment that it has been for all of us, and I'm so grateful to represent you guys and as like a youth ambassador, and yeah, so thank you, guys. My name is Annalise Tereri. I'm so sorry, I'm so nervous, and here is the amazing first princess.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you guys for having us here, and I want to thank Rotary for putting on the Ms. Yucca Valley pageant, and I'm very glad to be here, and I can't wait to attend so many more meetings and hopefully make a change in the community with you guys and with the youth. Now, I'm introducing, oh, and I'm Madison Hannah, and I'm introducing our second princess.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sarah Wasson. I just wanted to say thank you to the town, as well as the Rotary Club, for allowing all of us to be in this position. I'm so excited to serve our community this year and do a lot of awesome things within it. Thank you. And now introducing our third princess.
Hello, everyone. My name is Larissa Abbott, and I would like to thank you guys for having us tonight, and I'm so excited to see what we can do this year. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Ladies, turn around.[706.54][706.54](applause) Get a picture of you again. I want to thank Rotary for sponsoring a scholarship pageant. I know it's a lot of work, and we appreciate Rotary's commitment. It's been very, very successful, and if you've never attended one of the Ms. Yucca Valley pageants, I really encourage you to go to that scholarship pageant. Each and every one of the participants, and how many did you have this year? Fourteen? How many total ladies?
Nine.
Nine. We had nine ladies participate in the process, and they also get an opportunity to meet a prominent woman in the community, so they meet women that are leaders in our community who do outstanding things, they get to interview them, get to know a little bit about them, and then share the prominent woman's story to the entire audience that evening and to recognize that person as well. So it's a great, great program, there's scholarship monies that go out, and again, it's a scholarship pageant, and again, thank you, Rotary, for the dedication of investing in these young ladies. Appreciate it. We also have some new employees. I'm going to pass this back off to our staff, so our brand-new employees introductions tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to introduce you to our newest members to the town. I'm going to hand it off to Shane to start off with.
So Caleb, if you could join me up front of the microphone, please. Well, Mayor and Council, a few weeks ago, we stood before you recognizing a long-term employee retiring, wishing that retiring employee the best, and as he goes on into, hopefully, a long and enjoyable break from work. The second part of that process is replacement, and it's always a pleasure to be able to stand before you and introduce new employees. And this evening, when I introduce the newest addition to the Public Works team on the Street Crew, this evening is Caleb Buchanan. Caleb Buchanan is actually a Yucca Valley high school graduate, lives locally, and we'll start out on the personal side first, a little bit different approach. He is married, his wife is Kaylee. Kaylee is home this evening, taking care of their two young children. So it's really nice to have a family person on board with us, and bringing, as you can tell, some youth into the organization, as some of us are aging a little bit.
And size.[881.87][881.87](laughing) Absolutely, absolutely.
Caleb comes to us with a great background. Number one, heavy equipment operator, bulldozers, front-end loaders, graders, those types of things, those types of pieces of equipment that the Street Crew use on a weekly basis, so great skill set coming on board with the town. Also has a mechanic background in terms of maintenance and repair of vehicles, again, a very critical skill as part of the town's public works operation. So we want to welcome Caleb Buchanan this evening, as well as his family, to the organization, and it's a great pleasure to introduce him this evening.[924.87][924.87](applause)
I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity for being my family, to be part of you guys and part of the town and give back to the town. As I grew up here, I want to stay here, so I just want to say thank you again for the opportunity.
Well, thank you and welcome.[943.56][943.56](applause)
Griselda, will you join me at the microphone as well?
So it is my pleasure to introduce Griselda Dombowski. In a similar fashion, we had a long-term employee that left us and retired herself as office assistant for the town hall, and Griselda has been selected to take her place, and she's been fantastic, she's jumped right in, and she fits in wonderfully. She is also local, she has a husband and two beautiful, small children, so we welcome her family as well to our family, so I'd like to introduce Griselda.[994.76][994.76](applause)
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you to everybody, everybody has been wonderful. I am a local, and I am here to stay, and I'm really happy to enjoy, you know, getting to know everybody, to know everyone. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, didn't realize how to speak today, but also just want to let you guys know, I am here to stay, I'm happy to be here, and just, you know, looking forward to what's next here in the town. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome.[1022.87][1022.87](applause) Well, it's wonderful to find such good talent locally, that's impressive, so that's wonderful. Well, welcome aboard, and thank you for introducing yourselves, and you'll get used to public speaking, because just a matter of time, you'll be up speaking again. I am looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by the Mayor Pro Tem, and a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lombardo?
Councilmembers Denison.
Yes.
Droz.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Abel.
Yes. Consent agenda, all items listed on the consent agenda are routine matters or formal documents covering previous town council instructions. Items are enacted by one motion and a second without separate discussion unless a member of the town council or town staff requests dialogue on a specific item at the beginning of the meeting. Request to speak, public speaking on a consent agenda item should be filed with the town clerk. Do we have any requests to speak on any consent agenda items? Is anyone here in the audience wanting to speak on a consent agenda item? None online and none presently? Do I have anyone wanting to pull an item or make a motion?
I just want to say thank you to Don Rao for the $2,000 sponsorship for the Yucca Valley Senior Center, and I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
All right, so noted and?
Second.
We have a second?
Councilmembers Denison.
Yes.
Droz.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Abel.
Yes. And anyone visiting with us maybe for the first time tonight and wants to go ahead and leave, please go right ahead and do so, it'll be a meeting and we'll have some public hearings. If you'd like to stay, you're invited to do that as well, so thank you for being here tonight. Just want to give you permission to exit if you'd like. We're moving on to our public hearing, we're going to open that up. Solid Waste Handling Services will begin the public hearing. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. The item before you is the public hearing in connection with the placement of the fiscal year 2021-2022 solid waste handling service charges on the property tax roll. The recommendation is that the town council conduct a public hearing, two, review the report prepared by the town manager, and three, adopt a resolution authorizing the placement of the fiscal year 2021-2022 solid waste handling service charges on the property tax roll. On May 5th, 2020, the town council considered and approved the amended and restated franchise agreement for solid waste and recycling services between the town and Burt Tech Waste and Recycling Services. On May 19th, 2020, the town council approved ordinance number 289, which repealed and added chapter 6.02 solid waste management to the town's municipal code as the solid waste ordinance. In an effort to ensure maximum rate equity and program efficiency, both the franchise agreement and the solid waste ordinance included provisions authorizing the town to collect solid waste handling service charges through the property tax rolls at the same time as the general taxes. In accordance with Health and Safety Code, Section 5473, the town has prepared a written report which contains a description of each parcel of real property receiving solid waste handling services and the amount of the charge for each parcel for the 2021-2022 tax year. This report is on file with the town clerk and is attached to the staff report as Exhibit A. I also have them available here for the public to look at as well, and they, like I said, they are also on file with the town clerk. By approving the proposed resolution, the town council would be authorizing the town to collect solid waste handling charges on the tax roll in the same manner and at the same time as general taxes. Prior to approving the placement of the service charges on the tax roll, Health and Safety Section 5473 requires the town council to conduct a public hearing, and notice of this public hearing was provided in accordance with Health and Safety Section 5473.1 by publishing a notice of the hearing in the High Desert Star newspaper on May 26th and on June 2nd, 2021. During the public hearing, the town council shall hear and consider all objections or protests, if any, to the report and the placement of the charges on the tax roll. If the town council finds that a majority of the parcel owners subject to the charges have submitted protests or appear to protest, the report shall not be adopted and the charges must be collected separately from the tax roll. Upon the conclusion of the hearing, the council may adopt, revise, change, reduce, or modify any charge or overrule any or all objections. The resolution placing the charges on the tax roll must be approved by a two-thirds vote of the town council. As with that, I would remind you that the recommendation, again, is to, that the town council conducts a public hearing, two, reviews the report prepared by the town manager, and three, adopts a resolution authorizing the placement of the fiscal year 2021-2022 solid waste handling service charges on the property tax roll. I'd be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Very good. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on this particular item? Adam Clerk, anything in writing or that you've received? Anyone online, anyone in the audience? So my understanding, this is annually reviewed, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If I hear no other people wanting to speak on this, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion, bring it back to council. I think it's a pretty standard that we go ahead and continue to move forward with this, so I'll make a motion that we approve.
Denison, I'd like to move the recommendation of the town council of items one through three as stated.
Very good. I made a motion, that was the second, was it?
I made the motion.
You made the motion, I'll second your motion.
All right.
Councilmembers Denison.
Yes.
Droz.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Abel.
Yes. Jeff, you would enjoy this. I'm going to open up the public hearing again on item number 12, Annual Street and Drainage Landscape Lighting Assessments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. We have a presentation for the public hearing for the fiscal year 21-22, annual levy and collection of assessment, of assessment for the street and drainage landscaping and lighting assessment districts. The recommendation is that the town council adopt the resolutions, approving and confirming the assessment diagrams and confirming the assessment as set forth in the engineering report for landscaping and lighting maintenance district and a street drainage maintenance district within the existing districts for the 2021-2022 tax year, and authorize the levy of assessment upon real property as identified in the engineering's report. A brief summary, the town council has previously formed a total of seven landscape and lighting and a street and drainage assessment district as condition of private subdivision development projects appurvable. The assessment engineering report established an annual assessment in each of the districts and must be updated annually, requires town council approval, and requires public hearing in order to levy the annual assessment. The assessment of an annual fee upon property within the districts provides the revenue to offset the cost of maintenance of the public improvements to serve those districts or those developments. The assessment districts that we have in the town are the track map 16957 Living Spaces that has 34 residential lots, and the district type that we have in this track map are street and drainage and landscape and lighting. Track map 16587 is Mesquite 55, 55 lots, and the districts are also landscape and lighting and street and drainage. Track map 17328, Yucca Valley Estates, 17 residential lots with both districts too, and the track map 17455, Home Depot, with only one district that is the street drainage and maintenance, a street and drainage maintenance district. Here is a map, okay, I have a map somewhere here. Can you, there you are. Here is a map with the street and drainage maintenance district within the town limits, where they are located, and they are showing the levy of parcels and which were exempt of, to be levied. This is a map with the landscape and lighting maintenance districts, showing again all the parcels that were levy. This slide shows the annual assessment and levy per equivalent dwelling unit, so the staff has no alternatives, and the staff has no further alternatives, and their recommendation is that the town council adopt the resolutions, approving and confirming the assessment diagrams and confirming the assessment as set forth in the engineering's report for landscaping and lighting maintenance districts and a street and drainage maintenance districts within the existing districts for the 2021-2022 tax year, and authorize the levy of the assessment upon real property as identified in the engineering's report. I would like to say that this concludes my report, and we have with us today Nadia Benali from Web Municipalities, that she will answer any questions you may have after public comments.
Thank you for that. Adam Clerk, anyone submit any comments on that in written form? Anyone here tonight in the room or online? Again, this is annual, something annually that we must do, so if there's no other public comments or no public comments, we'll go ahead and close public hearing and bring it back to council.
Pretty standard stuff. We've been doing it every year, so.
Yeah.
Been adjusted to, to current fees and that sort of thing that have been assessed for maintenance in that area. They have a schedule of what it's going to cost, and it's been updated every year, so I think we just, I would like to approve the, make a motion that we approve.
We have a motion to approve?
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Lombardo with the motion.
Councilmembers Denison.
Yes.
Droz.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Abel.
Yes. All right, very good. We'll move on to our department reports, that's item number 13.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. This is another presentation for the fiscal year 21-22 SB 1 Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, the project list. Account, the project list. The recommendation is that the Town Council adopts a resolution approving the allocation of the town fiscal year 21-22 SB1 Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account funds estimated at the amount of $430,960, approving the associated project list for expenditures of RMRA funds as the town's project for the fiscal year 21-22, and direct the staff to publish and transmit the approved project list to the California Transportation Commission and any other required state agencies in accordance with the legislative requirements. Summary, the Road Repair and Accountability Act was SB1, was signed by the Governor in April of 2017 to address basic road maintenance rehabilitation and critical safety needs on both the state and local roads. A percentage of this fund is apportioned to cities and counties pursuant to streets and highway code for basic road maintenance rehabilitation, and in order to be eligible requires that the cities and counties provide basic annual road maintenance project reporting to the CTC, the California Transportation Commission. All agencies must submit their SB1 project list to the California Transportation Commission by July 1, 2021. The town impact, the funds projected, the revenues projected based on the California Department of Finance are estimated in the budget released by the Governor in January 8, 2021. The allocation for this fiscal year is $430,960, and they are to be used in road maintenance and rehabilitation, safety projects, completed street components, or traffic control devices. The town projects selected for the 2021-2022 fiscal year are the construction of Onaga Trail pedestrian improvement and the construction of Little League Drive pedestrian improvements. A project overview to understand these projects is Onaga Trail Pedestrian Improvement. The project description is the construction of sidewalks, curb and gutter handicap ramps, driveway approach on the north side and south side of Onaga Trail between Akoma Trail and Sage Avenue. The project is in the phase of the design, and the project was awarded on March of this year to KOA Corporation. Little League project, the project will construct improvements such as sidewalk on the south side of Little League, handicap ramps, bike routes, in addition to crosswalks for safe roadway crossing. A cul-de-sac is proposed approximately 450 feet from east of Palm. This project goes from Palm to Sage Avenue, and the project is in the design phase, and it was awarded on April of this year to KOA Corporation. The fiscal impact, Onaga Pedestrian Improvement Project is an active transportation, is a project from the Active Transportation Program grant funding, so we have state funding for that project. You can see in the left side of the slide that the construction cost is a total of $1 million, including contingencies, a total of $1,300,000. And in the right side of this slide, you can see the projected town funding that is going to be around $886,000. For Little League, another active transportation program project with a construction, total construction cost of $914,000, and the projected funding for the project is estimated in almost half a million dollars. So the Fund 517 Road Maintenance Rehabilitation Account or SB1, we have the estimated final allocation of $430,960. We have some interest of $500. The total, the total funds allocation for the town will be $431,460. The beginning fund balance from prior year is $151,000, so we have a total of $583,000 in the fund. The capital project, in the budget for the fiscal year 2021 allocated $351,000 for Onaga and $151,000 for Little League, with a total for capital projects of $502,000. So the Fund SB1 or SB1, the projected ending fund balance at the end of the year will be $81,000. So the recommendation to the council is to adopt the resolution approving the allocation of the town fiscal year 21-22 SB1 Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account funds estimated in the amount of $430,960, approving the associated project list for expenditures of these funds as the town's project for the fiscal year 21-22, and direct the staff to publish and transmit the approved project list to the California Transportation Commission and any other state agency in accordance to the legislative requirements. So that concludes my report, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have following public comments.
Well, it takes a lot of work to get those funds, but it also takes a lot of work to explain all that, so I appreciate that. We have the easy task. You had the hard one, so thank you for getting us through that. Let's see here, we have public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this important project? All right, we'll bring it back to the council. First of all, I cannot stress how important pedestrian safety is. That's so important, and as you've noticed through our town, we've had really big improvements on our main highway. You know, it wasn't so long ago that you would see people in a wheelchair or walking right on next to the highway with no sidewalks and anything like that. We'd see kids trying to walk to school out in the street or on the dirt. And because of the hardworking staff and finding us funds, we were able to do a lot of projects. The highway safety, highway safety is much safer now with all the sidewalks and so forth. We know that we've received safe routes to school funding before, so that was able to get us some safe routes to and from Yaca Valley High School as well as the elementary school in Yaca Valley. And of course, when Onaga was built, we required sidewalks to be on both sides of Onaga Elementary. So I know this is active transportation program, so it's not specified for schools, but as we get these monies, we're continuing to build sidewalks, which is really, really important. So I'm excited about that. And especially since we're going to be having so much activity around the Boys and Girls Club and the Little League and Aquatic Center, it's really important to have safe routes for everyone. So that's exciting. Anyone have a question or comment?
I'd just like to agree with you, Mayor. Very important for pedestrians in the areas of the schools and other magnets that we have. The parks have become quite popular, and I expect this summer to be even greater use and probably increased capacities that are challenging to the surrounding neighborhoods of kids getting there and getting back home safely. So these paths, as you see more and more traffic on our highways, we have improved sidewalks along the highways, as the mayor had mentioned. But this ties in what has been being developed for many years now, and since I've been on the council for six and a half, well, seven years, these have slowly been tied together along Pueblo, around our elementary schools that many of the children walk to school and use, the crossing facilities there, they're well-marked. But this allows a pedestrian path all the way from our east, our western school of Yaca Valley Elementary School, all the way to the high school. And the paths are starting to get improved. We've made improvements to get to our library. We've made improvements to get through our park and around the Little League fields. So these are very big pieces to what's happening in our community, and I'm very glad to see all the hard work that the staff has been doing to get these tied together finally. So it's a long project and very, very worthy, and I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Okay. Also, I believe that this project will be starting after the highway improvement projects are done, right? The one, we should have the highways completely, the main highway done before we start working on the Onaga, or will that be?
According to the Caltrans schedule, I believe we will be under construction while the Highway 62 project is under construction. What we don't know is where will Caltrans be physically located with their work? They have not been able to provide us a schedule by location at this point in time. They may be finished in Yaca Valley, they may be in Morongo, they may not be finished in Yaca Valley. We don't know, they have not, we've made numerous requests for the schedule, we have not seen that yet. So at this point, it's undetermined.
Okay, and do we have any flexibility if we find that there's still, I mean, it looks like to me, I mean, just from what they've been coning off lately, they're really sort of starting to work in the heart of the town now. I can't imagine that that continuing in that portion.
So right now, they are, Caltrans is performing concrete work, so they're doing the new curb returns, and they handicap ramps at the intersections. Simultaneously, they are in 29 Palms with their pulverizing equipment and laying down new asphalt, and they'll be working their way in this direction. Now, they've already done the work, as you know, in a section of the county area in Joshua Tree. After they're done in 29 Palms, are they coming here, or are they going down to the bottom of the Morongo grade and coming back this way? We don't know at this time. As soon as we have that information, we'll be making that available to the council and the community when it becomes available.
Okay, yeah, that would be critically important because such an impact. All right. So we have a motion. I'll go ahead and second. If there's no other discussion, we'll have a vote.
Who had the motion?
Dennison.
Thank you. Council members Dennison.
Yes.
Droz.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Abel.
Yes. All right. Moving on to department report number 14, records retention. That sounds exciting.
Oh, boy.
Well, you beat me to it. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This just might be the most exciting topic of the evening. So this item is to update the town's current records retention schedule to reflect legal and administrative changes following a routine review. The retention schedule has been in place since 2004 and has been periodically updated since that time. So what is a record? A record is a document or other form such as books, microforms, or electronic files as defined by the Public Records Act. The nature and purpose of the record helps to define how long the information shall be retained. According to the town's municipal code, the town clerk acts as the records manager and is responsible for the storage, maintenance, and disposition of the town's records. To assist with this, the town contracts with Gladwell Governmental Services to provide an annual review and maintenance of the retention schedule. The town attorney also reviews the document on a routine basis. So why a retention schedule? Like many of the other towns' adopted plans, the retention schedule provides policy direction for the standard course of business. The retention schedule provides policy direction for the standard course of business, already said that. The retention schedule identifies and describes the different types of town records and the lifespan each record type requires. The schedule also provides how the records are to be stored and legal references for each of these requirements. At the end of the record's lifespan, the records are prepped, logged, and reviewed prior to being securely destroyed. The current update includes changes in legal references of select records and an increase in active retention for grant files. New record types have been added for COVID-19-related and redistricting-related items, and changes in the SEQA reporting requirements has triggered a change in the retention of specified correspondence. So the recommendation before you this evening is to approve the resolution amending the town's retention schedule as attached here too as Exhibit A. That concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions following public comment.
All right. Just a reminder, you only have three minutes to talk on this particular item if you'd like to speak about our public records retention update. This is your opportunity. Anyone? I'm a little disappointed, but thank you. We'll bring it back to the council. Any questions or motions?
Just make a motion that the records retention schedule is very detailed. Thank you.
I'll second. Motion and second.
And I'll make the motion, I guess.
Council members Dennison.
Yes.
Droz.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Abel.
Yes. All right. Strategic planning calendar update, item 15.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On the heels of that exciting topic, we get to talk about strategic planning. You knew that was coming. This is just a, an outline of your upcoming activities that you'll be undergoing this year. You'll recollect that the cycle that we use is aligned with your two-year budget cycle. So typically, in the odd calendar years, we move forward with strategic planning in, starts really in the spring, and we do that through the authorization of the Community Livability Survey, which is out in the field right now. As that information is gathered and assembled, then that will come back to you in late summer, early fall. And from that, we build into your strategic planning session based on the input that you've seen from the Community Livability Survey, along with other items of interest that are of interest to the council and the community through that input process. And so this year, we would expect a number of topics that will be before the council and the community, things like short-term vacation rental concerns that the community has voiced already, understanding what those are, understanding how they may play out into your strategic planning sessions, and ultimate policy changes that the council or community may wish to embark on. All of that will then culminate into a draft strategic plan that will be your guide for the next coming two-to-four, six-year cycle. Through that, then we launch into the budget, your two-year budget cycle, which starts in the January timeframe of the even year, and so you should wrap that up. If it is done according to how we've done it both in the past and based on input from both the council and the community, ideally, your budget cycle should reflect the priorities that are established in your strategic planning, so it becomes relatively straightforward process. So upcoming events that you'll have, we already have on the calendar, I believe, your final review of the existing strategic plan, basically your report card on how we've done so far, that'll be on your, at your meeting of August 17. And then your first workshop, public workshop, is scheduled already for October 5 of the upcoming year. I conclude staff comments on this item, Mayor. Be happy to answer other questions after public comment.
Very good. Opening up for public comment? All right, bringing it back to staff. Excuse me, council. Receive and file? We're all in accordance, in agreement? All right, no other questions? All right, we'll receive and file that update. Thank you very much. Community cleanup days, item 16.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. The item before you is that the Town Council receive and file the information provided about the community cleanup day that we held on May 15, 2021. Council provided, or excuse me, council directed staff to host a community cleanup day for our town residents, and the last community cleanup day that the town hosted was in 2019. We weren't able to have one last year due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and as part of the town's revised franchise agreement with BRTech, all costs for this event, including disposal, were covered by BRTech. So in putting together a community cleanup day, a lot of people are involved with that. So staff coordinated with BRTech, and we scheduled the event for May 15. BRTech provided seven front loader trash trucks, eight 40-yard roll-off containers, and two flatbed trucks for electronics. We accepted bagged trash, electronics, metal, tires, and mattresses at this event. We had five public works staff members running the event for us. They set up the traffic control and barricades for the street closures and traffic management. They managed the dust control by running a water truck, and they also assisted the public with dumping the items into the appropriate bins. There was also about 15 BRTech staff members on site as well, operating the front load, front loader trash trucks, and they also assisted with dumping the items for the public. We also had citizens on patrol on site, and they assisted with traffic control. They guided motorists, and they also provided information. We also took the opportunity to provide some public education as part of the town's recycling and composting public education plan. So Burttec handed out this educational information to each vehicle that talks about how to recycle, what to recycle, how to donate, our bulky item pickup, uh, as part of our franchise agreement, and some other items. So every vehicle who came through was able to receive this information. They also, uh, Burttec also has an educational message board now. And so we, it's a double-sided message board, and we had this at the entrance of the event as well. In advertising for the event, we placed ads in the local paper. We also had on the radio station, all over the town, social media. We created an event on Facebook. We had it on the town's website, and we also had this flyer available at Town Hall. And it was also handed out by our town's code enforcement officer. So the participation results are listed here. We counted vehicles this, this year. We didn't count vehicles before. I'm not sure why, but we didn't. We had about one hundred and sixty-nine vehicles come through. And the items that we collected here, you can see thirteen point four-two tons of trash, two-point-three tons of tires, three tons of e-waste, and one-point-nine-three tons of metal. And if you look at the comparison chart from the years before, we were a little bit lower than 2019, but still kind of within the ballpark. Definitely not what we used to have back in the day when it was the free dump days and the county would open up the landfills. But it's still, it's, it's trash that's not getting put into our desert. So we're happy to take it. So staff attributes the lower tonnages to a couple of different factors. One is the fact that every household now in Yucca Valley has trash service. So I think that accounts for the lower total trash collection that we saw at the event. Also, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, uh, and with many businesses that were closed, residents had time to clean up around their house. And they were able to take advantage of the free bulky item pickup service that we have with our franchise agreement. And this is evident because Burttec also reported higher-than-normal residential and recycling activity in 2020 due to COVID-19. So staff looks forward to holding the next Community Cleanup Event at Burttec's new transfer station next year. So that will be a nice location. And I wanted to wrap up this presentation with just some pictures of the event. So this was some of the traffic control that the public works staff put together. This was, uh, cars coming into the event. They were all lined up all the way down Business Center Drive. And then we put them through this little horseshoe here so we don't, they don't back up too far out onto Yucca Trail. So we had a bunch of people here. And just an overshot of the whole thing. You see the big front end loaders in this area here. And then we had all the roll-offs in, like a square. This over here is the flatbeds where the electronics was taken. A couple of other pictures of, uh, traffic, stuff going through, or excuse me, cars coming through, and an action shot of one of our bulldozers helping would get a big huge TV into the flatbed. Some more action shots of the public works staff helping with a whole bucket full of stuff being dumped into this roll-off here. Our water truck, uh, keeping everything, uh, keeping all the dust under control. And then some more staff helping with tires and more people helping get things out. And finally, some more staff here taking electronics and dumping things into some roll-offs. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, the recommendation is that the council receive and file the information provided about the Community Cleanup Day that was held on May fifteenth. And I'd be happy to answer any questions following public comment.
Great. Anyone wishing to speak on the Community Cleanup results? All right, we'll bring it back to the council. We used to have a program, it was called Buck a Bag Day, where nonprofits could raise monies by going out and cleaning up neighborhood lots and, and do a cleanup. It was well-participated, a way of youth groups and so forth to raise monies. What happened to that program? Is that something we might even consider coming back? Because as you see in the desert, there's a lot of debris that gets just blown off of either out of people's trash cans and into the desert, or plastic bags from the shopping centers that just pile up, cups from convenience, uh, drive-throughs and so forth.
Yeah, um, we could definitely look into that. I think those were before my time here at the town, but I can definitely look into a program like that. There is also the Clean Team that goes out. They are a volunteer organization that goes out and does different cleaning as well. And so I wanted to reengage that team and see if we could be of any assistance with them in going out and cleaning up some of the illegally dumped items that we see out in the desert.
Yeah, continue to keep them.
Motivated.
Motivated staff, uh, more items as far as safety clothing, anything we can provide them for.
Right.
For their job. And I'm sure they'll tell you there's more work to be done than what they could possibly do. But I'd like to see the Buck a Bag Program maybe come back if we could subsidize that in some way.
Okay, I'll see what we can do.
All right. Yes?
In addition to that, I, I think the program is great. Every time that they do the event, it seems to be very productive. This year, it looked like, uh, the council went down a little bit, and I believe that's possibly a direct result of complete trash collection at all residents in our area. People aren't motivated as much anymore to collect on the side of their house or, or relocate it into our deserts. One of the thing that is common in the deserts are, are pilings of heavy waste, generally construction waste. With, uh, with the development going on and the remodeling of homes in our area, there is a lot of construction waste that has developed. And some of the newer piles that I see, it used to be just, uh, a waste like from someone moving, or waste of maybe car tires and heavy items that cost a lot to get into the dump because of their payload. Now I'm beginning to see as I go off-road and ride my bicycle around, uh, construction waste. So it'd be nice if maybe we could look at some project to include that during these days for, uh, construction waste that has been not from a project or trying to, uh, not carry that weight to the dump, but where it's found in the desert. And allow those people that are willing to go there loaded and bring it to these events. I think that could be beneficial. A lot of people would like to go and pick that up themselves, but then what do they do with it? That's probably my biggest concern, and that's the beauty of this No Cost Collection Day for all kinds of waste. So I'd like to maybe be, see if we can be creative and include other things that aren't right now taken.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've, uh, I was happy that we put the fee for waste collection on the tax rolls. I was anticipating that it was going to limit the illegal dumping, but I was graced with a, a sofa and, uh, headboard and, uh, furniture from somebody moving out, and they left it at my place of business at the dumpster. And it's too big to move. And it's, so we still have a problem with those kind of things happening. So these free dump days are great, and I am full approval of that. So I would like to make a motion that we.
It's a, yeah, receive and file?
Receive and file.
Excellent.
I don't know how we solve all the problems with the trash. People are still knuckleheads. We have videotape of this guy pulling up to the trash can at three separate times at like two in the morning, three in the morning, and four, dumping the stuff one right after the other.
Same person.
Same person.
Yeah, unfortunate, yeah. I know sometimes behind some of the thrift stores, people are just dumping more like trash versus donations, you know? All right. All right, well, we'll receive and file. If there's any other comments, I think that's great. Thank you. I'm glad the community is still supporting it. I do like how much staff did in outreach. I mean, you covered every way to get the word out. So, um, you know, perhaps with the new facility again. And I think those informational flyers that the, uh, Burttec puts out on what can be done as far as waste and how it can be picked up right at your home. So like you said, if that person has a couch they want to get rid of, they'll have to do is call Burttec because they, they have, they come and pick it up. So, and you're allowed so many items every other month or something. All right, well, thank you. We'll move on to item number seventeen, Town Manager Employment Contract Amendment. Addendum.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The item before you is a proposed amendment to the Town of Yucca Valley Employment Agreement for the position of Town Manager. As you're aware, the Town Council recently conducted an annual performance evaluation of the Town Manager and provided Mr. Yakima with an outstanding evaluation for the last two years. In consideration of this performance evaluation, the town is proposing an amendment to Mr. Yakima's employment agreement with the town. There is only one proposed change to the employment agreement, which is a change to the section on the base compensation. And that change reads as follows. Base compensation. For the services rendered pursuant to this agreement, employees shall receive base compensation of $215,000 annually, which shall be paid on a prorata basis bi-weekly at the same time as other employees of the town are paid, effective with the pay period beginning on June fifth, 2021, inclusive of the cost-of-living adjustment approved for fiscal year 2021, 2022. And the rest of the agreement remains the same. And there are no, no additional changes. That concludes the report. Happy to answer any questions after public comment.
All right, excellent. We'll open up for public comment on our Town Manager and compensation. All right, seen none? Well, um, courtesy goes without saying, um, we are always so thrilled with the performance in which you, uh, have provided the town. You've done an outstanding job, uh, since taking over the duties as Town Manager. I know it's sort of awkward to have people talk about you and so forth, but, uh, you really have done a, a great job. And this has been a very trying year as well with the pandemic and navigating entire staff. You've kept people healthy, you've kept people moving forward. Services have been held together. We didn't see a drop in, in, uh, services to our community. And again, you just do an outstanding job. And I know the, uh, the town's very appreciative of your efforts. I am a council, and your evaluation reflected that. So I would, uh, move that we would approve the amendment to the Town Manager's employment agreement. All right, we have a motion, a second?
Councilmembers Dennison.
Yes.
Drose.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Abel.
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, we'll bring on to future agenda items.
Oh, I have one. I, I would like to, uh, request some information on affordable housing, pros and cons of how we do it in, or how it's been done in other places that are effective. I, I feel a, a need to have affordable housing for our young people who are transitioning from, uh, high school, moving out of their parents' home, or early college age. The rents are so high now, and it's hard to get established. And I wonder what kind of things can be done that the town might participate in and what has been done in the past. I would like to see some ideas, some opportunities, and see if that's something that we can discuss in the future.
Okay. So, um, staff, uh, would gather that up, and then if you have enough information, want to put it on a future agenda, we could do that. But yeah, let us know. Yeah, affordable housing's a, a nationwide problem. It's a, it's definitely a, a California problem as we've seen, uh, just the, um, real estate market go up, and affordability is very much impacted. Thank goodness we were able to, uh, to build the Affordable Senior Housing Project because seniors are very vulnerable as far as, uh, having housing opportunities, the fixed income, and being able to put such a nice facility in the center of town has been really a blessing. And it's been filled, and it's been managed well. And so, you know, if there's other opportunities for some type of affordable housing, maybe I've seen projects also where you have those that are, uh, perhaps on limited income, mixed in also with people that can pay market value, mixed in with people that are maybe moderate and need some assistance. And that type of project would be something I would be interested in seeing as well. So, thank you. One thing I would like staff to do is continue with, with the dialogue. It's not an agenda item, but continue with the dialogue with the Sheriff's Department on the off-road enforcement. We're getting, uh, some people stating that, uh, maybe kids are still looking for things to do and so forth, and they've seen an increase in their neighborhoods of off-road vehicles. And as we know, native plants are very sensitive, and our Joshua trees are protected. And so if we're protecting a Joshua tree in the center of town, we should be protecting, uh, Joshua trees and in, on vacant lots and things like that. So some of the, uh, concerns. So if we can continue with the Sheriff's Department dialogue on what we're doing with off-road enforcement. And then also, if staff would look into, uh, defensible space, communities that have defensible space ordinances. We're moving into another high fire season. And, um, as you know, we're in a high-fire risk area. And, uh, if we need another, perhaps ordinance or something to give some teeth, uh, to those people who are not, uh, dealing with some brush and so forth, that might be something we could look into. What I don't want to promote is the scraping of lots clean and ruining our, our desert, um, uh, environment. So I don't want the, I don't want that clear-cutting type of thing, but I think we need to maybe look to see what other communities might be doing in defensible space and, uh, and, and help our firefighters when a fire does come in our area to be able to defend homes. Do you have anything on that, Shane? Or, and you were, I thought you were going up to the mic. Okay.
I can make some comments under staff comments.
Okay, excellent. But anyway, just maybe look into what other communities might be doing in that regards. Anyone else that has any direction for staff or anything that might want to be a future agenda item? Okay. Public comments. We'll move on to the Town Council. Takes this time to consider your comments on items of concern which are not on the agenda. We will have three minutes in which you can speak. Is there anyone online or here who would like to speak on a public, uh, on an item that's not on the agenda tonight? All right, that's why I save some of the extra verbiage. I hope that's okay with legal counsel. All right. Staff reports and comments. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna have Sue come up, I think. Yeah, there's Sue. Um, she's gonna give you an update on some of our community service items. I just wanted to let you know that both the captain and lieutenant were called away for, in a, uh, emergency meeting this afternoon in Victorville, so they were not able to make it. But they, uh, wanted to send their regrets that they couldn't make it tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Summer program registration is underway with our aquatics program registration opening on June seventh. So that was a, a busy day and a fun day. And our pool will be opening on June twenty-first. To date, we have sold three hundred and sixty-three of our five hundred and seventy-six Learn to Swim classes. So that's about sixty-three percent sold. We are retaining our COVID modifications through the first two weeks or Session One of our program, and will then reevaluate our options and make adjustments as appropriate. We also had a robust attendance at our two swim testing sessions, assisting a total of seventy swim students in choosing their swim class level. We're also preparing for our Fourth of July fireworks spectacular and concert at Brum Park. This event is free of charge, and thanks to today's change in COVID regulations, we will be able to host the event without capacity limits or distancing. However, we will follow all required San Bernardino County public health regulations, which allows for fully vaccinated people to resume activities without wearing a mask or physically distancing. This means that fully vaccinated individuals will not be required to wear face coverings at the event. Unvaccinated or partially vaccinated individuals will be required to wear facial coverings at the event. And participants will be reminded of the admittance requirements through informational signage at the entrances. For those who prefer to view the event at home, the show will feature high-flying fireworks in celebration of the town's thirtieth anniversary, along with a music simulcast on Z107.7 Radio. And we will also be broadcasting the event live via Facebook Live. This is also the kickoff to our Summer Music Festival, and our featured band is a concert favorite, Upstream, who are master performers with the Caribbean sound. The event will also feature kids' activities by Miss Yucca Valley and her court, as well as food vendors. The Summer, Summer Music Festival will continue on July seventeenth and July thirty-first, both also at Brum Park to provide for additional space. So we're looking forward to seeing everyone again and excited to get underway with summer programming.
Thank you, Sue. Deborah, Armando, anything? All right, Shane?
Mayor and Council, a few items this evening.
Mayor and Council, a few items this evening. You may have noticed that we have some maintenance needs on some of the meeting islands out on Highway 62. Our normal program is delayed because Caltrans has current construction activity occurring. They are performing lane closures with that construction activity, and Caltrans doesn't allow two construction zones simultaneously. Actually, in this morning's Public Works morning briefing, we discussed alternative ways that we could at least get out on the concrete meeting islands and take care of the appearance issues. We're hoping to address that in the next couple of weeks. Along the lines of Highway 62, just kind of want to follow up on the mayor's comments this evening. We will be working with Ray DeSalle. Ray is our representative with Caltrans to acquire the schedule, so we can do the best job that we can in project coordination. It is very early on in the town's two projects on both Onaga and Little League. We're just starting the design phase, so it's a little bit early to try and do that coordination, but staff is going to make their best efforts to make sure that we minimize any disruption for the community. Aldi has requested their total fees for the building permits, so that they can cut those checks and that their contractor can pull the construction permit. They are wanting to move forward immediately and be open before the holiday season. Held a pre-application today with the owners of the old post office building, was also the antique mall down at Fox and Highway 62. There are a number of technical issues that make development of that site a little bit difficult, from the future widening of Highway 62, their current parking configuration. They are proposing to add property on the south side of the alleyway to the south of the existing building in order to provide for more parking. They have construction, existing construction that actually goes on to adjoining property, so there's a number of different issues that have to be worked through. They probably were a little bit surprised at some of their input today, but they also received communication that town staff supports their project, and we are here to help them through that process as best as we can, and hopefully we'll see them moving forward. Rumor hit the phones at our building today that a group from Los Angeles has purchased Gotti's Restaurant Building. Again, this is rumor. It was a phone call to the planning staff. They're based out of LA, and one of the partners recently moved and relocated to Joshua Tree. They're hoping to focus on a music venue with the restaurant activity. So, again, that's rumor. We'll see how that comes through. In terms of comments this evening, council comments about affordable housing, maybe one of the ways that we can approach that for the council is something we already have to do, and that's part of our Housing Element Update. As the council's aware, that's underway, and we're anticipating either separate Planning Commission and Town Council workshops in July or August, or the potential for a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the Town Council. Staff would be happy to talk with our Housing Element consultants, could probably very easily find an affordable housing expert that could give a 15-minute overview of how affordable housing projects are facilitated. In that line, it's important to keep in mind how we define what affordable housing is. There's affordable housing defined by the state, based upon income limits, restrictions on the properties to those income limits versus non-restricted income levels. So, number of different issues, technical issues, but that may be a way of approaching that that's comprehensive with the Housing Element Update coming back. We will be coming forward to the council with the specific streets for your million-dollar allocation of Measure Y funds. We had made a broad, generalized area identified with your budget process. Staff has narrowed those down to specific recommendations. Those will probably be coming to the Town Council in August with the Measure Y five-year plan. Finally, as the council recalled, there were grant funds that were allocated to the senior center kitchen, as well as the kitchen here in the Yakavalli Room. We've started incrementally moving those projects forward. We're gonna be, we've made one purchase of a new oven. We've made purchase of new heating and air conditioning equipment out of a separate fund, separate grant fund. We're going to be finalizing a list with representatives from FSA next week for proposed improvements we're probably gonna bring onboard. The need, gonna have the need for an architect to help with the bid package for those, get those out to bid, to make sure we're moving those projects forward timely. Finally, on defensible space, I think what staff would be happy to do is distribute out the information that our Fire Protection Agency has. San Bernardino County does an excellent job of defining and helping property owners in defensible space and creating that defensible space without eliminating all of the vegetation, especially when it comes to the Western Joshua Tree and other protected species. So we'll be happy to get that information out as a part of that educational process. That concludes staff comments this evening, my comments this evening.
Thank you, Shane. Council, you had the opportunity to meet two new employees. Pretty excited about that. We have just finished interviews and offers to three additional employees for vacancies that the town had. Super excited about the talent pool that we're starting to see or that we have seen, and some of the new applicants that have been offered employment with the town. So in upcoming meetings, you'll have the opportunity to meet those folks as well, but well-needed and well-deserved for some of the applicants as well. So, as Sue mentioned it, in her comments, the reopening of California, and you know, we take that with a grain of salt. We're super excited about having less regulation, as long as it is safe and it's done in a safe manner. At the same time, there is conflicting information, whether it's from CalOSHA, who defines California workplace regulations, to the Department of Public Health, to the county, or even at the federal level at CDC. So some of that's still in a state of flux. We understand that CalOSHA, particularly with rules for our environment inside, whether it's our work offices or even our indoor spaces for the public to use, may be having additional conversations as early as this Thursday with some changes that may be occurring at the end of this month. So we'll keep you apprised as that moves forward and how it impacts what we're doing here at the town. One kind of funny comment, you probably have noticed on our Zoom call, we have closed captioning in an effort to be able to provide another way of communicating with folks maybe that are hearing impaired. That has its pros and cons. I think they called Yakavalli Yakama Valley a couple of times, and Morongo Valley Morocco. So there's probably a number of other things that are kind of funny on there, kind of goes with the territory, but we'll see how that goes, how the public input is on that, and we may or may not keep that. Shane indicated the Caltrans project. I've told Leslie that one of our objectives is just to make sure that the public's aware of it and how impactful it is at certain times during the day, so we're gonna issue that every Monday as a public advisory for traffic issues in town, encourage individuals to use alternate routes as appropriate. I think the, two more comments. One, you did have some rather mundane items on your agenda today. We do that every once in a while, and for example, I've asked Leslie today when she presented hers on public records. We do that for specific reasons, namely to ensure that the public and the council know that there are different regulations that apply to public agencies. And for example, public records, I remember my wife running a small business, and I would come home and there were records up in a box on top of the garage shelf. That's not the way that we do things here at the town. We can't do that, it's not appropriate, and so we wanted to make sure that the council knows that we take that very seriously, so that when people have a public records request, they know that the information that they're going to get is accurate and in compliance with state regulations. Finally, just on a personal note, thank you for your continued support in me as your town manager. I can't do this at all without the entire team, and I have a terrific team of employees. You've met some of them, new ones today, ones that have been here since beginning of time, like Shane. But without doubt, I have a terrific team, and so I'm thankful for each one of our employees. You guys make my job a lot easier, and to the council for your continued support. So thank you for that, I do appreciate it. Mayor, that's all the comments this evening.
Thank you. Battalion Chief, you've sat through the whole meeting, do you have anything to add today?
Yeah, I have an update. I have Shane summed it up quite nicely. He did the space.
Thank you so very much, appreciate it. All right, then we'll bring it back to council for their comments and reports. Councilmember Dennison.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Shane started off pretty well when he was introducing our new employees about, it reminded me of a little bit of succession planning as people retire out, and hopefully they get an opportunity to do all those things they've thought about for many years. And getting to meet Caleb tonight and Griselda was really nice, to see young people that are members of our community, and they both have young children, and I think that's fantastic to step forward and help us move this town forward and make sure that it's a place that we want to move to and we want to stay. So, very important, and I really appreciate it. I was glad to hear Sue talking about the fireworks coming back, and there's been a lot of folks online that were wondering if those events are ever going to come back, including like swimming and stuff like that. And there are a few folks that are still kind of weary about fireworks in our community, claiming that there are sometimes disruptions with pets and things like that. So we have a lot of lead-in time. This is our last meeting until after the 4th of July, and I would encourage everyone to know that day is coming, and the fireworks show is going to take place. And it's an annual event, and it's a big event for many, many people, they enjoy it. Just be known that it's only about 30 minutes, and I think we can all work together, make sure that we do pay attention to animals may get out of their backyards and things like that, and we want to be mindful of that and keep an eye open, and if the owners come looking, let's all work together, along with Animal Control, to make sure that we can make it as pleasurable as possible for those few that seem to have, you know, a little more trouble with pets than some. I really want to say thank you. Linda Shaw Morrison and Dana were here tonight, and the mayor talked about her, and what an inspiration. She spends a lot of time, I've tried to sew a button back on, and it took me like an hour to do, and it wasn't easy to do. And I'm looking at that stuff, and they're well-made, and I started noticing everyone was using those bags. So I just want to shout out, thank you very much for being a part of our community and working for such a worthy cause. The Pregnancy Center in our community is local, it's right over in the Ideal Mall, I believe it is, and a resource that is a benefit to many in our community, so thank you for that. And last, thank you for the Miss Yakavalli Court coming out. It was a challenging year with all the changes and trying to get back into these social engagements, and they had the event this year, and now we get to see, we met four young women in the court, and I think that's wonderful. So I appreciate their efforts, that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Droz.
All right. First off, I kind of wonder if the closed captioning can be adjusted for Armando? Can it? Okay, good.
I thought his was the best. Pretty accurate.
I'm just kidding. Anyway, it's great to see Caleb, and you're still here, so thank you for hanging out the whole meeting, and welcome to Yakavalli, or you've lived here for your whole life, but welcome to the town of Yakavalli, working here. And Griselda, I'm really excited that both of you are new employees. I'm excited that we talked about trash a lot tonight, and that's really important. There is so much, yeah, there is so much illegal dumping, and hopefully it will start to make an effect, especially with everybody having trash service. You know, it just started, let's see what happens in the next year, and hopefully it will be, it will improve. Curtis, I think you really deserve a lot of kudos, so thank you. Everything is well-deserved, and you're always kind, knowledgeable, and professional, and we really appreciate it. And I also want to send some kudos out to the Planning Commission. I've been listening to some of their meetings, and they are really an intelligent bunch of people. So I encourage you to listen to Planning Commission meetings, they're really, they really know what they're doing. I was on the Planning Commission for five and a half years, and they blow me away, their knowledge, it's pretty incredible, so. And that's about it. So everybody have a great 4th of July, and we'll see you at the fireworks show.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Lombardo.
Thank you. Kind of a ditto on a lot of the information that was just given by Councilmember Droz. Linda Shaw Morrison, you are a truly great example of the quiet warrior that we have here in town, doing the things that need to be done, not in the spotlight, but really meaningful service to your community, and we just, it's good that we had a chance to recognize you. And I learned a lot about it, because I didn't know you before either, so, but worthy contribution towards the Pregnancy Clinic, and there are so many things like that in the community that help little segments of our community that need help, that are, you know, displaced or feeling that nobody cares about them. And I think it was a very good group that you chose to help there, and your contributions have been tremendous, as evidenced by their comments, that you've just been giving your all for 10 years or more, and that's really, really commendable. I want to welcome aboard the new employees, Caleb and Griselda. Welcome to the family and hope to see you grow in your knowledge of your job and your love for the community. It's nice to hear that you're both locals and raised here, raising your families here. It's really nice to see that. We do want to keep a community that's a place that our employees value and treasure as well, as our community. And it's nice to see young families starting and growing and having the ability to stay here, and that's kind of why I'm interested in seeing some things happen with affordable Do you want to thank Curtis for his huge contribution to making our town run and your employment contract? You earned everything double. You've outdone all of our expectations. You're a wonderful town manager, and things move so smoothly, and everything seems to have, you're a very good planner, and have made so many of the systems work so much more efficiently. I've been on Town Council for a long time now, and I really like the idea of the two-year budget and the budgeting cycle that you have, and the way that we review the community and ask for their input, so that we can put that into what's important to get done, and the way that you keep track of how all the projects are moving along. We can come at any time and ask, you know, what's happening with this, and right away you have information to give us on it. So it's been really nice to work together, and I hope we can continue to do that in the future. That's about it with that. I still want to see a fire station, okay? 4th of July is coming up, everybody be safe, enjoy that, and let's celebrate 30 years. I think that's great. We'd have a really tremendous community to celebrate, and we've made great progress in the 30 years, and looking for 30 more. All right, thank you.
Thank you, well said. Mayor Protem, Schuler.
Yes, pretty much the same comments. Linda Shaw Morrison, I remember going to her and Dana's wedding 20 or so years ago in Morongo Valley, and she and Dana were an inspiration then, and even much more so now, so thank you for recognizing her this evening. And the Miss Yakavalli Court, thanks to the Rotary for continuing that tradition in town. It's not an easy program to run, but I appreciate them continuing that, and also welcome to the new staff. It's nice to see Caleb and Griselda, yes, being local, but apparently having intentions to make the town of Yakavalli a long-term gig for them, and so welcome, and good luck with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it was very much an honor to recognize Linda Shaw Morrison tonight, and I've asked staff to provide with her, because she is hearing impaired. Her mobility and her hands are very limited. As you see, standing or walking is very difficult, and yet she makes those beautiful bags and those beautiful burping towels, and she just gives of herself. So I'm glad Miss Yakavalli Court got to see an example of an extraordinary woman and her strength. I've asked the staff to provide a written record on the comments tonight, so she could enjoy what was said, and so of course, your comments tonight from the council will be written down for her, so she and her husband can see those. so she and her husband can see those at a later date. Thank you for the attempt on the closed caption and so forth. I was watching it, seemed to do pretty well. I think whoever watches get the gist. And if you're hearing impaired, you, you recognize that that is not a perfect system anyway, so. But I think communicating to our residents of all abilities or our challenges is important. So I appreciate the effort that we made tonight and hopefully we can continue it and perfect it in the future. Again, with Miss Yucca Valley pageant, I want to thank those long-term people from the Rotary, Sheldon Huff and Tara, put in many, many decades of time and effort into that program. And it's great to see John Bobowski bring that same energy to it. It's a very long process. My wife and I, Dory, had the opportunity to be part of one of the judging teams that looked at doing the interviewing. So people don't recognize just that night, that is not the entire grading system or that's not the entire event. There's so much behind the scenes that, that those participants participate in. And I've had many, many young ladies come back and tell me what a great change in their life by going through the process. Whether they made the court or not, they, they really appreciated the entire process. And of course, the Miss Yucca Valley Court, they're gonna be very busy with things opening up and events, so it'd be great to see them as our representatives in town. So Sheldon, Tara, John, thank you for your behind-the-scenes, hard work and so forth. Wanted to thank Z107.7, Gary Danielle and Cindy for inviting myself and our city, our town manager to join them on the Up Close Show. We had a good experience, had the opportunity for several people to call in and ask questions. And it was a great, quick one hour, but it was a great experience and I know several of you have had that opportunity. And again, I think communicating with the public, finding out exactly what our citizens are thinking, getting a pulse for what's the topics of the day and being able to be responsive government, not just a non-caring bureaucratic government. So we want to continue that friendly and dialogue and, and find solutions to challenges. Our special meeting, we'll be having a special meeting on Tuesday, June 22nd. That'll be a special meeting right here in the same room. So if you want to mark your calendar, I believe that'll be at 5 o'clock, 5 o'clock. So our next meeting will be Tuesday, June 22nd. In closing, and after this final message that we're gonna play, in closing, I wanted to let you know that the town manager and I, Curtis and I, had the opportunity and the honor to attend the service for Sergeant Dominic Vaca. Dominic, his service was held in San Bernardino, well-attended. Saw our battalion chief there, saw county supervisors there, saw city staff from 29 Palms. Of course, everybody from the Morongo Station was there and it was very, very touching and a very well-put-together program. Mike Grumpy was the, the chaplain and he did an excellent job. Our own chief of police did a fantastic job in honoring the sergeant and his family. Of course, the, John McMahon, our county sheriff was there, presented a flag to his wife and family. And that was at the Glenn Helen Amphitheater in San Bernardino on Friday, June 11th. And with that, they closed with this final message and that's how we'll end tonight's meeting. So if we have that, we'll go ahead and play that in his honor.
9-SAM-5, Victorville. 9-SAM-5, unit with Sergeant Vaca, Victorville. All units stand by for a tone out. Code 33, this channel for final call. Sergeant Dominic David Vaca was fatally shot on May 31st, 2021, while answering the call for duty. He gave of himself while serving his community with courage and valor. The men and women at the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department are forever grateful and proud to have served with Sergeant Vaca and will never forget his ultimate sacrifice. All units break for a moment of silence.
My dad was a deputy sheriff for 17 years and he protected people he didn't even know, just like he protected me, my baby sister, mom and all our family. He taught me to be brave, kind and always take care of my family. On May 31st, my dad showed up to work a job he loved. He was brave, kind and took care of his partners. Dad, I remember the lessons you taught me and share them with my sister. I love you forever and will miss you every day.
Dominic, may you rest in peace knowing your strength lives on in your wife. Your legacy will be carried on through your daughters, who will know their father is a hero and your honor will continue with all of us. Sergeant Dominic Vaca, you are clear to go EOW and rest in paradise. We have the watch from here until we meet again. Code 33 lifted. Victorville clear.